M I D C Standard Seven Review and Qualification Requirements. G, Request to Approve Payment Application Number Six Final and Change Order Number One for the 2024 Lawn Maintenance Contract to Capital Landscapes of Oak Park, Michigan, in the amounts of $3,207 and a credit of $5,033.50 respectively. H, Request to Approve Payment Application Number Six Final and Change Order Number One for the 2024 Landscape Maintenance Contract to Capital Landscapes of Oak Park, Michigan, in the amount of $12,052 and a credit of $3,875 respectively. Aye, New and Renewal Licenses for December 16th, 2024. Did anyone want an item discussed separately? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Puts us to number six, Recognition of Visiting Elected Officials. I don't see anyone. Seven, Special Recognition Presentations in recognition for our resident Kenneth Sherman. And we have this. Okay, we have a lovely plaque. City of Oak Park Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Kenneth J. Sherman in grateful recognition for numerous donations to the Oak Park Public Safety Department and their K-9 program. Thank you for your generosity and dedicated support to enhance public safety in the city of Oak Park. Signed by Eric Tungate, City Manager, and Marion McClellan, Mayor, December 16th, 2024. And Mr. Sherman and City Council members, would you come forward for a photo op? Do we have one?
Steve Cooper.
And Steve Cooper?
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. City Manager Tungate, Attorney Kraus, and City Clerk Norris. Just want to say how grateful we are for Mr. Sherman for all the contributions that he's made towards the Public Safety Department, specifically towards our K-9 program. And the reason that we're here specifically to honor him tonight is, obviously, as you know, with the impending retirement of Mace from the K-9 program, Officer Lawless and Vader have taken up that position. The main difference between Officer K-9 Mace and K-9 Vader is Mace was trained in narcotics and actually Vader now is trained in explosives, which is quite costly and actually a different skill set. One of the things that's required is an explosives training kit. And when we're speaking to Mr. Sherman about the kit and just talking about Vader on numerous occasions, he so generously offered to foot the bill for the explosives kit, and that kit rang in just under four grand.
Holy hell.
Yeah. And Officer Lawless actually has a kit. We have a plate inscribed on the front of it. And if Kyle, if you don't mind, read the plate and then kind of going through real quickly and explaining to us what's in the kit and so our audience will know.
So moved.
You need him over here at the mic so he can...
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're gonna probably come back and forth to the mic if...
So Ken, I know we showed you the plate or the plaque on the kit earlier before the meeting, but what it says is it's donated by Kenneth J. Sherman in memory of Morris and Francis Sherman. And pretty much what it is, is an explosive kit with 23 different types of explosives in it, where Vader is trained to detect all of them. It's been utilized already in training. We train every Thursday. It's been utilized six, seven, eight times, I think, since we've gotten it. And it's a huge help for not only our city, but for the surrounding cities that we train with. There's about six or seven explosive dogs in our area that we train with, and we all utilize our respected kits for our days. And with ours being one of the newer kits, it gets used quite frequently. So again, thanks, Ken. We do really appreciate the generous gift to help us succeed and be the best that we can be.
Wow.
Yeah. Again, like you said, we want to... I'm sure Mr. Sherman will probably come up and have a photo opportunity, but with obviously with budgets being tight and, you know, always trying to find a way to make things happen, Mr. Sherman hasn't been shy and he's been very generous, not only with the K-9 program, but with other donations that he's made throughout the years for the Public Safety Department. So can't thank you enough. It's much appreciated. Our heart goes out to you. I know you've been a supporter. He's been in our Citizens Academy a couple... I think he got a doctorate now, three times. So he's got a doctorate in Oak Park Public Safety Academy. So we love having him around and we appreciate you. And God bless you and thank you for the generous donation.
Mr. Sherman, would you like to come up and say a few words?
You have three minutes.
(laughing). He's got 4,000.
Good evening. Thank you for the recognition, but it really isn't about me. It's about a tribute to the men, women, and the K-9 officers of the Public Safety Department who put their lives on the line every day for the citizens of Oak Park. And also, it's in tribute and in remembrance of my late parents who passed away back in January of 2014, within nine days of one another after being married for 70-plus years, raising five kids, and growing up in Oak Park. They were native Oak Parkers, and they taught me the value of, you know, being supportive of law enforcement and being supportive of pets, especially dogs. And so it's really for those reasons that I made the donations that I did. It's not really looking for any special recognition, but just carrying on the legacy that my parents instilled in me all these many years. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And now come forward for the photo op. Please notice the picture of the dog on Ken's shirt.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
All right. Good. Everybody good smile. All right. Smile here. There we go. All right. Good. Everybody good smile. All right. Smile here. There we go. All right. Good. Smile. This'll be the folder sponsored by (laughing). The Penn.
We put really hard up.
Yeah.
I have to talk to you at the end of the meeting. A lot of people have extra money and they use it to put on a new car or to take a fancy trip. A lot of people do not donate it to the City of Oak Park Public Safety. So Ken Sherman is a special person to have that in his heart. Accounting reports. Need approval for payment of invoices submitted by Garen Luco Miller, P.C., for legal services in the amount of $17,064.88. Is there a motion to approve payment?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe it was last month that the firm came to us about a retainer increase, and I thought that was supposed to be $4,000 to $8,000. So what's the 20,000 on this one?
It was 18.
Yeah, it was 18.
So it was 18. The retainer was 18. But keep in mind, they pre-bill us. They always have. And so this is for the first quarter of 2025, first calendar quarter of 2025.
So what was it before the increase?
It was 18.
18?
Yeah.
So was there an error in the...
There's two quarters that we made up for in 2024, and so that's why it was the four.
Okay. Because it says on the retainer increase, it says the usual, and they're looking for an additional $4,000 in their current fiscal year and the full $8,000 for the forthcoming fiscal year.
So that was just for... Let me do the math in my head here a second, make sure we got this right. This is directly tied to their invoice, by the way. So they were at 72. They've asked for eight, so it'd be two per quarter. They've asked... They were at 72. They've asked for 80. So that's an increase of 8,000, 2,000 a quarter.
Are we talking about the labor retainer or are we talking... We're talking about the labor retainer.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's Schiffman Fournier.
Right. We just had an agenda on 11/18 that said their regular fee was $4,000 and they were commencing on January 1st, 2025. It would be $8,000.
Annually. It'd be an increase of 8,000 annually.
Increase.
So per quarter it'd be 2,000. But the 4,000 you're referring to was that the... They wanted to be... They had asked you guys to make up for in 2024, so it would have been two quarters worth of bills, 2,000 each.
Okay. And then they're pre-billing us for 25.
Right, right.
We always pay at the beginning of the quarter for that group.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. Item nine on the agenda is about ordinances. Item nine A is second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 Elections of the Code of Ordinances, City of Oak Park, by replacing Article Two Voting Precincts thereof in its entirety. The proposed ordinance allows for the permanent combination of specific voting precincts for future elections. First, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion or questions? My discussion would just be because of early voting and because of the large number of people who vote absentee now, even though 2012 we were overrun at a presidential election, that was when most people voted at the precincts. That's just not the case anymore, and so to save money and to be more efficient, we're combining precincts. And with the early voting and the absentee voting, it won't cause crowding at the precincts. Any questions or discussion?
Just, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to add one thing. Also, like every other place, we were having a harder time finding people to work the polls. That's another reason for the contraction.
Yep. Councilmember Edgar, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan? Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item nine B, First Reading of an Ordinance to Amend Chapter 10 Amusements and Entertainment of the Code of Ordinances, City of Oak Park, by replacing Article Six Mechanical Amusement Devices thereof in its entirety. The ordinance is being repealed as portions of it are preempted by new state law, and the remainder is outdated and is no longer necessary. So first, can we get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Would our city attorney explain this ordinance change?
(inaudible) Madam Mayor and City Council. This particular section is being replaced. This section is being replaced because a large portion of it is preempted by liquor control licensing. This ordinance was originally enacted in the early 1970s, and it is no longer enforced as a result of other ordinances covering this particular conduct.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We are now in the city manager portion. City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am going to start with 10A1 facade grant approval for 26011 Coolidge Highway and ask our manager of authorities, Michelle Bishop, to join me at the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Before you, we have a facade grant for application for a new business opening in Oak Park called More Than Scrubs. They will be located at 26011 Coolidge Highway. The business has previously been an online store, and they have decided to open a brick and mortar, and they chose Oak Park, which is fabulous. They plan to open in the next month or two, and they would like to use the facade grant towards a lighted sign for their business. The CIA Board has given their approval, and they've met the requirements for signs in Oak Park, although they do need to pull a sign permit. We are asking the city council to approve the matching grant in the amount not to exceed $3,470.50, and it is budgeted in the Corridor Improvement Authority budget.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the facade grant, matching funds?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion or questions?
First of all, what does the business sell?
They sell scrubs. So it's actually right down the road from Corwell, and they do all kinds of scrubs. So they... Not just like your traditional, they have a lot of different styles, and they also cater to people who just like wearing scrubs because they're comfortable.
And that strip, Coolidge. Can't hear it.
I don't know what's going on with these pipes. Try this one.
Really loud? Okay. Every store in that strip is different. Why is there no consistency?
Because you have different store owners. You have many different store owners, so they might own one storefront, they might own two. So they're each doing kind of their own thing.
Is there any responsibility on the part of the owners to... And apparently not, because we're giving them money to do this, but don't they have a responsibility to keep the storefront nice and provide a sign?
No. I mean, as a small business owner myself, the sign never was involved or never came with your business. That was always the responsibility of the business owner. So I mean, if you think about it, you know, they could be replacing signs every couple of years, depending on the type of business they had in there, and I mean, those signs could be anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000, so.
What was in the space before? I can't remember.
So Winx and Wax, which has moved next door. They actually had two... They were hoping to fill two storefronts. They decided to move into one of them, and so that space came open, and that's More Than Scrubs grabbed it.
Winx and Wax. Winx.
Like, they do a lot of beauty appointments, that type of thing, yeah.
Right. I peeked in the window.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's see. We need a vote. Facade grant approval. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, 10A2. I would like to ask our city engineer, Cara Grissimer, to join me at the podium, and I understand we have some images we'd like to put up along with your presentation today.
Yes. Just a few images to illustrate what this contract is about. So as you can see on the screen, this is the Z03 Plaza Deck that will be replaced over the next two years. And Church Street is there on the left with the parking lot. And in the middle there with the blue and the green and the tan striping in the oval, that is the existing playground equipment. They are going to remove it and salvage it if it is in good enough condition. And then the same swing set will also be replaced in a similar area. The three new things... Well, some of the three new things. We're getting a large... We're getting a large pavilion and two small pavilions that can be rented out through our recreation department. Across Church Street, on the left side of that, just off the Plaza Deck, is a new fitness training station that's going to be more like a... It's going to be geared for 13 and up, so those are going to be for the older kids. There will be a bench on the west side of Church Street as well with shade structures, and there'll be more shade structures around for the seating areas around the playground as well. This is the view from a different direction. This is a zoomed-in area of the pavilions. MDOT is providing us with the pavilions and all the new shade structures and the new benches for free as part of their project to replace this structure. They will be... You can see a little building there on the right. They will be taking some leads for sewer and water. The city will be responsible for putting in a restroom structure, but the MDOT will be bringing the utilities for that structure as part of their project.
So Cara, I want you to deliberate on that in just a minute, because that's a huge thing, a huge part of this, that we worked very hard to negotiate into this project. And secondly, I just know we have some renderings of the shelters here.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there are currently no shelters on this site.
That's correct. There are no shelters. There is very little shade and no shade benches or anything like that. So this is going to be a massive improvement to this park.
Why didn't... Why won't MDOT supply the restroom?
They explained to us that MDOT doesn't buy restrooms. It's not a thing that they wanted to be involved in. They had very specific rules that the restroom obviously could not be on the bridge structure itself, so they did compromise with us with the utility leads to bring it to the right spot where we would be constructing a restroom in the future.
So can I... That's exactly...
I wanted to ask where the restroom is sited. I sort of saw the schematic, but is it next to where the Ball Diamond is?
It's going to be between the pavilions and the Ball Diamond.
So very close.
Off that north side of the bridge.
I just want to, with all due respect to MDOT, I'm trying my best, but I want to say that when we started these negotiations, I forget the exact footage, but they came to us and said that they would like to make the replacement bridge deck smaller. And I don't know, how many feet was that?
Oh, it was significant. It was going to change the park size from almost three acres to less than two and a half, I want to say.
So that's where this started, and we said absolutely not, and we held out. And then I went to, well, if you're going to do this, you know, we'll... They agreed to keep it at the same footprint. If you're going to do this, we have to have restrooms. And they said absolutely not, and we held out, and now we're going to put restrooms in there under the condition, they're going to run all the utilities, which is the most costly part of doing that if we put the structure in. So that was the compromise.
Yes. So this is... This contract is going to be in place for MDOT to construct it, and then Oak Park will take it over once that project is completed, and we will be maintaining the amenities in the park facilities going forward, as well as able to run out the pavilion and the other amenities in the park as well.
Can I... Cara, so the revenue from those facilities would come to the city, correct?
That is correct.
And then I have another question, and maybe Lori, maybe this one's for you actually, but Cara, I'll ask you first. The Ball Diamond and the facilities, the immediate area there, what is happening to that in terms of MDOT's involvement?
The ball field will be shut for about two years while the bridge is going to be replaced. They will... We will have to find alternative facilities for those Ball Diamond rentals, and Recreation has assured me that they can do that, and they will find, you know, similar fields in Tyler Park or here in Shepherd Park.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Julie Edgar?
So I think it's great that the city was able to get these concessions from MDOT since it's going to be a two-year project and it's going to create a lot of issues, traffic issues for cars, pedestrians, et cetera. One thing, I don't know if you mentioned this to them, but it sure would be nice if they would put lighting heading west from Church Street where it's entering Rostian Park because it's pitch black at night. Since they're putting something on that side, is there any way we can squeeze a little bit more out of MDOT?
We...
Dave, in the renderings, can we put that back up?
Can you put the renderings back up, please?
Dave, do you happen to know if that... Because I swear I thought they did tell us that, but...
Yeah, so... Can you put in the first slide? All right. So there will be new lighting installed as part of this project on both sides of Church Street. This rendering doesn't actually have it in there, but they will be putting some lighting in the area of the fitness training station, as far as I could tell.
Will the fitness training station be similar to the one that was off of 10 Mile? You know, just equipment that you pull and...
No. It's going to be more like the long fitness equipment on the Linear Park.
They will, we will have to find alternative facilities for those Ball Diamond rentals. And Recreation has assured me that they can do that, and they will find, you know, similar fields in Tyler Park or here in Shepherd Park.
Um, Councilmember Julie Edgar.
So, I think it's great that the city was able to get these concessions from MDOT since it's going to be a two-year project and it's going to create a lot of issues, traffic issues, for cars, pedestrians, et cetera. One thing, I don't know if you mentioned this to them, but it sure would be nice if they would put lighting heading west from Church Street where it's entering Rothstein Park because it's pitch black at night. Since they're putting something on that side, is there any way we can squeeze a little bit more out of MDOT?
We- Can you put the renderings back up, please?
Dave, do you happen to know if that, because I swear I thought they did tell us that, but-
Yeah, so, um, can you put in the first slide? All right, so there will be new lighting installed as part of this project on both sides of Church Street. This rendering doesn't actually have it in there, but they will be putting some lighting in the area of the fitness training station as far as I could tell.
Will the fitness training station be similar to the one that was off of Ten Mile? You know, just equipment that you pull and-
No, it's going to be more like the long fitness equipment on the Linear Park where we have like lots of agility-type things where you have to go from, you know, monkey bars to stepping stones that might tip and tilt and more like the Ninja Warrior-type stuff. Challenge courses.
Kara, just for clarification, so, correct me if I'm wrong.
So, it's not adult.
That part of it is happening on the west side of Church.
Yes. There is a decent amount of space between that, from the back of those houses is probably at least two to two hundred feet. That, that area is pretty generous with Rothstein and Victoria Park coming together.
The, the fitness equipment in the old Rothstein, I guess, area was for adults?
Yes.
And is this new equipment for adults?
Yes, thirteen and up, so teenagers and adults. It will be sized for people who are fully grown.
And is it like senior-friendly?
I believe at least some parts of it will be, yes.
Part of the plan?
So, just one more question. How much is this project going to cost, MDOT?
MDOT is, well, for the whole project or just the ZO3?
The ZO3.
Um, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but they got, can you remind me how much the grant that they got was for this?
Dave, I'm going to defer to twenty-two million.
Twenty-two million?
I thought I was going to say twenty, but yeah.
Is what they got as a grant from the federal government to put into this park. But I believe that their total costs may exceed that, just for the ZO3.
Madam Mayor, can I just make one more-
City Manager Eric Tungate.
So, you know, I think what, the takeaway is that, I mean, all in all, it's a good project. And assuming that it's a good project, not only does it enhance the park setting and shelters and bathrooms and things for our residents, the issue, I think, is going to be, it's going to start construction this spring.
Yes.
And it's going to go for two years. And for us, this is all going to happen at a time when we have all of this other construction going on. So, for our residents, it's going to feel like the whole city is under construction all at once, unfortunately. And there are going to be some hardships for people passing through that area. It is what it is.
Yes. Can I, can I remind people about how this project is going to impact six ninety-six traffic? Six ninety-six?
For commuters.
Yes, so six ninety-six is going to be westbound only for two full years. They will have the westbound traffic on westbound lanes in 2025, and all of the ramps will be open. There'll be periodic bridge work. They'll be improving the bridge across Greenfield. They'll be improving the crossovers and Coolidge. They're going to be improving a lot of those bridges. Once the eastbound lanes are reconstructed, they're going to move westbound traffic to the eastbound lanes. Coolidge and Greenfield will not have exits in 2026. They will be closed altogether. You will be able to exit at South Field Road and take Surface Streets or Woodward and take Surface Streets. So, unfortunately, in 2026, there will be no exits from six ninety-six in Oak Park.
And what was the year that they made their mess the last time?
It was 2016.
2016, we went through all of that. And not only didn't work, but it made the project worse. So, this is a total rebuild?
Total reconstruction. That whole thing is going to be fully removed and replaced.
Now, why do we think it's not going to leak this time?
They said that they have modern engineering. The old box span bridge is outdated and wasn't, was basically coming to the end of its lifespan anyway, but it had also been further damaged by the ice buildup. So, they think that the whole bridge replacement is the appropriate fix for this problem. They think that they have engineered their way out of the issues that they have currently.
Engineered their way into the issue the first time, correct?
They did.
And it's the same engineers?
No, actually, it is not.
Okay.
Their structural engineering department is responsible for the plans, whereas previously, it was, the structural and bridge department was not involved.
Who was involved?
Um, I'm not entirely certain about the exact department at MDOT, but they don't get the bridges and structures involved until, unless they're actually removing, replacing structures.
So, Madam Mayor, can I just comment on that?
City Manager Eric Tungate.
Back in 2016, councilmembers, as you know, we sat in here and we heard all the same stuff about MDOT's project. So, you know, this one is different, though. It is much more substantial. That was a six million dollar project. This is a twenty-two million dollar project. It's much more substantial. We had MDOT consultants sitting in these meetings with us telling us this new bladder system would be the save-all, solve-all problem.
Bladder system?
Bladder system.
Bladder.
So, basically, it would capture all of the runoff into this new system. Obviously, that didn't work. So, there's no way we can guarantee that anything they're telling us is accurate, unfortunately. And unfortunately also, it's out of our hands. It's part of, you know, six ninety-six and the easement. It's not something that we have jurisdiction over.
Uh, City Councilmember Julie Edgar.
Yes.
So, are they, can you give us some details about the project?
So, as you know, the curbs along the Greenfield Bridge are in very bad shape, as you say. They will be doing significant patch and repair work as well as we're going to get a new black cyclone pedestrian guard fencing along both sides of Greenfield Bridge. And then they're going to be doing similar repair work at the three Coolidge Bridges, including the two crossovers. They're going to be doing similar repair to the Scotia Bridges and any of the other crossovers within the project limits.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Kara, we're not pointing our ire at you. We like you a lot.
I'm simply reporting what they say, but I do agree that-
And I think we speak for the citizens.
I recommend we shoot the messenger.
They should have listened to you, right? You have the materials to use.
Yes, with all my structural engineering experience.
Well, we have, this is, we just get the report and pass it on because we don't control it.
Yes.
All right. Any further questions or issues? Okay. All right, so that's item two. So, that puts us on item three for you. Ah, vote on two. That would be helpful. We are voting on the contract 245321 for the bridge reconstruction of the Victoria Plaza and Church Street, also known as the ZO3 Plaza Deck.
Second.
And we've already discussed, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, item 10A3, but before we go to that, Councilmember Whitehead, I want to point out that our deputy director, Dan Fairless, also got the memo about the gray suits tonight for some, I respect that. But Dan, could you take 10A3 for us, please, sir?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and city manager. This item before you this evening is a request to approve a change order from Blue Star demolition for the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars. Back on November eighteenth, council approved Blue Star's bid to demolish thirteen-two-hundred Oak Park Boulevard. In that original bid, they included performing environmental testing. And that testing was performed about two weeks ago. The results came back late last week, and a significant amount of asbestos was detected, primarily in floor tiling in the basement and in the foundation itself. So, to properly-
Just an aside, couldn't they look at it and tell that there was asbestos tile?
They can't until they actually do actual sampling and send it to a lab and have it analyzed. They don't know for sure. So, to properly remove and dispose of that material, it's an extra cost of twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars. So, the original bid of one hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars would now be one hundred and forty thousand three hundred dollars. So, again, the request is to authorize that change order for Blue Star to continue with the process and properly remediate the contaminants while they're doing the demolition. And all costs associated with this are going to be assessed to the property. This is, was a lawsuit.
A motion to approve the change order and budget amendment for the demolition project at thirteen-two-hundred Oak Park Boulevard, raising the total to one hundred and forty thousand three hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion about this? Yes, City Manager Eric Tungate.
Dan, just so councilmembers are aware, with, if this change is approved tonight, the actual demolition is set to occur when?
I'm anticipating now with this setback, with this, they probably won't start until after the New Year.
Okay.
Further questions? No. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Okay, councilmembers, before I get to the Elevate Oak Park update, I do want to ask our communications director, Brittany Toth, to join me at the podium, surprise, surprise. And I would like her to showcase the brand-new city calendar that is hot off the press and in mailboxes.
Yes.
It is hot off the presses. Well, our apologies for the technical difficulties. We're doing what we can with some gum and a Band-Aid. So, yes, this is the 2025 da-da-da-da city calendar. Hopefully, it has arrived via every-door direct mail to a resident, residents near you, your actual residents. And, um-
And they're in it.
Yes, so, and then they are here in City Hall as well. So, we have yet to hear of any major changes, so no news is typically good news. That, I think that's it. Is there anything else?
Beautiful. I've looked at it, and it's a lovely job. And people enjoy finding their pictures in there.
They do, yeah. So, hopefully, we've got a good variety of all of our engaged residents and board members and council members, so.
I have to say, as an aside, this is my thirteenth here. This is the best of the thirteens so far.
Oh, sure. He's just saying that, yeah.
Tell me what you like.
I just, I love that it features the residents.
Yes, and I have to give a special shout-out to our city photographers and, and multi-talented communication staff who really, I leaned heavily on to help pick the variety and, and who were out and about all year long making sure we had great photos. So, thank you to the team for that.
And if you want to be in the calendar, come to the events.
Yes, come to the events and don't be shy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, I would like to give an Elevate Oak Park update. Before I get into just some general updates about the event hub, I would like to ask Recreation Director Lori Stasiak to join me at the podium. We have some very special announcements tonight. So, just when you thought we had done all we could do, Lori and her team, we have, through Lori and her team's hard work, we have been selected for two very prestigious awards, and Lori is going to announce those. Please.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Tungate. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and City Manager Tungate. Every year, M-Parks, which is the Michigan Recreation and Park Association, honors exemplary park and recreation professionals, organizations, and citizen advocates through their annual awards. I am so pleased to share with you tonight that the Recreation Department has received two awards for 2425. Our Power of Produce received an Innovative Recreation Programming Award, and the Nine Mile Parks received the Program or Parks Design Award. So, very briefly, the Power of Produce is a seven-week program during the farmer's market season. It has two tracks, one for children ages four through twelve, and the other for seniors ages fifty and over. And it's designed to provide participants with opportunities to purchase fresh produce. It provides the, it engages the citizens to, in nutrition education, and they enjoy interactive activities. It encourages healthier eating habits by offering incentives for purchasing fruits and vegetables and hosting engaging educational activities on the benefits of nutritious foods. By completing their homework, the kids' tasks like exploring new foods, food safety, gardening techniques, et cetera. And for the adult track, they venture into nutrition education, food safety, submitting favorite recipes, and other interactive at-home assignments, and they earn Market Bucks, which is monetary award so that they can use them weekly at the farmer's market. The program has been highly successful, and residents tell us how much of an impact it has made on them increasing healthy food choices into their diets. We have also had a lot of sponsorship dollars pour into this particular program, and it covers the costs of the program fully. This program is managed by Mary Lee Roseman, our Recreation Coordinator, and Erin Foley, our Recreation Specialist. The second award, as you know, the Nine Mile Corridor was transformed into a walkable, vibrant public space. And that project design and conception was significantly informed by years of public input and numerous planning hours of city staff time. Many are sitting behind me. All the pieces came together to create a string of meaningful public spaces for residents and visitors of all ages and abilities to visit. They stay, play, and shop in this area. Its location provides a comfortable, safe walk to nearby bus stops, several neighborhoods, and access to other amenities, including the Nine Mile Linear Park, Connector Park, Sherman and Seneca Pocket Parks. And for these reasons, we received the second award for park design. These awards will be given out officially at the M-Parks Annual Conference in Traverse City in early March.
Thank you so much, Lori, and that's fantastic news, and thank you to all of our staff who have worked so hard on this. So, we didn't get the MML Community Excellence Award, so this feels like some redemption here.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, I don't have any new updates to share with you regarding the Elevate Oak Park projects except to say that we have received confirmation from the county on the Oak Park Woods project in Shepherd Park, that that project, the total investment of that project, and I'm looking at you, Dave, but it'll be right around six million now. And we started, which I could not be happier about, we started that conversation prior to the election, saying about two million. So, we've, you know, tripled the, the investment in that park. Costs have gone up a little bit. But at the same time, we're getting some great amenities, new play equipment. The shelter's going to be redone over there, new trails. It's, it's going to be outstanding. And I'm very, very thankful for Oakland County and working with us on that. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the other projects, just moving forward on getting those bid out.
I, yes. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
So, why did the, why did Oakland County decide to give us significantly more money for this project? Is, do they just have the money to give?
Well-
The thing passed on the election.
Well, the, right, the ballot initiative did pass, which of course, you know, allowed them to invest more in this. But in the initial part of this, Chris Ward, who's the Director of Parks and Rec for Oakland County, and this was at the, at the direction of the county executive, they- they really wanted to, what they called right some wrongs in terms of the lack of investment in parks and recreation south of M59, so. And they had done some investment in Southfield and Madison Heights and other nearby communities, having never done up until this point any investment in, any physical, permanent investment in Oak Park. So I think they felt this was an opportunity to really set the record straight. So they came in big and were very, very happy with that, so.
Before this administration took over in Oakland County, something like 75% of the Oakland County Recreation Budget was spent north of 59. 75% of the people in Oakland County live south of 59. There were all kinds of golf courses built up there that were being used by people from other counties coming down. It was not equitable. They did have a lot of free land up there, but there was no equity. In the first years that I was mayor, nothing was spent from Oakland County, nothing on recreation south of 59. And that just was infuriating. So this is righting historic wrongs, and it's beautiful news for Oak Park because this is going to be, it's our jewel anyway, and it's going to take our jewel and add extra diamonds to it.
And Madam Mayor and Council, I would just also add that, you know, I kind of, I was talking about this a moment ago with the Plaza Deck project, but here too, you know, this project is going to break ground. The Oakland County, Oak Park Woods project is going to break ground in the early spring. And I know that, you know, it's going to create some inconveniences for some residents. In fact, we had to go back to the drawing board to figure out a way to have our July 4th event. And I think we figured that out adequately. But I would just ask that everybody please remain patient. We are, it's rather have this than nothing happening. We are experiencing a tremendous amount of growth and change and redevelopment of things. And, you know, this, for the foreseeable future in Oak Park, this is going to be the norm, which is construction projects galore. So bear with us, we'll do our very best to make sure these community resources and assets are still available to our residents as quickly as possible.
And when we're done, it's going to be something.
Unless there are other questions, I'd like to just say happy holidays to everyone. And that completes the City Manager Report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, excellent. Call to the audience. Please limit, well, first, do we have any cards? Yes, please limit your comments to about three minutes.
I do have a card from Silva, Haywood.
It is amazing to me that they did not know what a mess Coolidge and 696 was until we called them there to look at it. They don't look.
Good afternoon, everyone. To the council, to the mayor and the councilman and the members that attended. I am internal grateful for Officer Cooper and his constituents, and also the, Chris, I think his last name, Christopher Shea, which is code enforcer, and Kim. Maroney, who stepped up to the plate and getting the, of what I had requested. And that was a vehicle that had been parked on the street for as much as five to six months. And it was difficult for the lead picker-upper to get around and pick up the leaves and stuff of that nature. And the garbage, the garbage containers was left on the street for weeks and weeks at a time. So after calling Chris, so Chris told me, he says, Silva, he said, hey, I got you. I'm going to find them for doing this because this was the second or thirty, or the third time that he had approached them. So I think the last time, last go-round, I guess, the last rodeo, it must have worked because now everybody can go down the street freely. You're not hitting up against no garbage container, knocking the wheels off the garbage container, and so it's much better. So I just say, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks to you for keeping on it and reporting it. It helps so much to get feedback from the residents, and we want to make you happy and hope you continue to be satisfied with surface.
Thank you so much, and everybody have a happy and a safe Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anyone else care to, please come. Give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Esther Eenber. My address is 25961 Marlow Place. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but then when I saw the calendar come out, and I noticed that I was a February calendar girl, and that brought to mind that that picture was taken at a tea party. And it came to mind as well, why don't we have another tea party? I really enjoyed that activity. It's up to you guys, but it would be nice to have one. You could have a fresher picture of me next time. And another program I had seen in Southfield, I mentioned to someone, I haven't heard anything back. It was called Jukebox Bingo. So instead of numbers, you, there's a fellow who has a company, and he plays different songs, and you look it up on your, on your card, and they play the song, and everyone ends up singing the songs. It was a lot of fun, so I think Oak Park should do that, too.
Thank you for your suggestions. We will give it to our very busy Recreation Department, see what they can do. Anyone else? Mr. White, if you could put up the first picture. There we go. So Sean and Janelle Kelly are not the owners of the building that Hanson's is, but owners of the business Hanson's. Hall, Hanson's Hall. And it's one of five businesses that they run similarly, Sean and Janelle Kelly. When we went to a Tri-City event there, Sean Kelly was raving about the service that he gets as a business owner in the city of Oak Park. He said he has businesses in five different cities, Detroit and Birmingham and three others. And by far, we are the most responsive, effective, business-friendly city thanks to our remarkable city manager and staff and directors. I get blown away by these comments because when I started in 2011, and I was knocking on doors, a guy was trying to build a garage, and he said, I started to build the garage, I laid the cement, and the guy said he was going to come, and it took a month for him to come out and okay it. And then they were giving me problems about building the garage. He said, don't you people want me to improve my property in Oak Park? And that was the level of business friendliness in 2011. So this is a sea change, and I am so proud of us, I could spit. Next slide? Thank you. This is, Hanson's Hall is a very cute place. While we were there for our event, there was a table of people playing with Uno with enlarged cards, and their pooch, a very well-behaved pooch, was sitting next to the table, hoping for good luck on maybe treats or something. And that is a councilwoman from the city of Southfield who was also there and was just delighted with the, she said, this kind of event you find in midtown or someplace. Wonderful, wonderful things are happening in the city of Oak Park. Pinch me. There was also a youth assistance breakfast, annual youth assistance breakfast. My daughter is a judge, circuit court judge in Oregon, and they don't have youth assistants there, but she's very interested in starting it because it's a combination of the city, the schools, and the courts coming together to try and catch kids who are in danger of getting into the court system and helping them, maybe giving them classes and things that they like, getting them in the band, doing something positive for them so that it changes the trajectory of their life. So this was celebrating that. And these, the first lady was the winner of the Best Project from Royal Oak, I believe. And the other lady was a wonderful, wonderful woman, talking about all the things that could be done for youth assistance. And the next slide? That's it? We're done? Okay, thank you so much. Lots going on in Oak Park and so much good news, it's just a joy. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight, and have a wonderful holiday season, Happy New Year.
Councilmember Sean Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out to Ken Sherman Appreciation Day. I wore my best suit for you, Ken, today. Thank you for your contribution. Every dollar counts, every sacrifice that our residents makes matters. Ken is on like three or four boards, so not even just the monetary value that he brings to the city, but the value that he brings to all the different boards with his perspectives and input is immeasurable. So thank you, Ken. I would like to say too, happy holidays to everyone. And then last, I'm doing a little reminiscent. This, today would be four years of my first council meeting today. So, thank you. And when I started, I said, I want to have Oak Park represent its name well, which would be to have the best parks in all of Oakland County. Well, that's happening, thanks to our Recreation Department and all the finance and all the different engineering teams and our city managers' leadership and mayor's leadership. And we can't do it with a magic wand, though, so there is going to have to be some sweat equity and some labor and some onerous days of having to maybe take different routes to get to where you want to go. But you're going to see all of that come to fruition in the next 24 months or so here in the city. And it's a beautiful thing that you're going to see with your actual eyes, tangibly, that we're going to have the best parks in all of Oakland County, and everybody's going to travel here for it. And it's amazing that the work that everybody's put in to get to that point. And I hope everybody have a Happy New Year. If I don't see you before then, thank you.
Thank you, see you next year. There being no further business to come before this council, this meeting is adjourned.